Just.
Sorry.
What do you want to do?
Just move that chair so I can see if, unless that's Murray coming in, but just so I can see you better.
Does anybody know Zoom well enough to know why it's showing my desktop and not the video?
I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't, is the audio?
Where is the share? See the share button?
Yeah, just click on that and. On video.
I feel like you just need to drag it up. Yeah. I don't know why the camera's not working, but.
Are you? You shouldn't be a member of the meeting, right?
I'm the host. I don't think it matters.
Your laptop shouldn't be the host, like this.
No, it's not my laptop, right? No, it's, it's this computer.
Oh.
Looks like you got more than one session open too.
Yeah.
Like three of them.
And the cameras?
I don't think it matters. We're just, we just need the audio, right? Oh, is that what you're saying? And we?
No, there's only one Zoom open.
Well, what's that little window?
It's this session. I used to know this. Share, okay, share screen. Now I don't.
What is under video? And the camera looks like it's off.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, we just won't have video.
Okay. So we're, we're live.
If you think.
Hey, you don't get to see our pretty faces. You get to hear our wonderful voices. Yeah, Bruce Colgrin, and I call this planning board meeting to order. Draft minutes from June 3rd. Does anybody have anything?
I didn't have anything.
Permission to accept the minutes.
Okay, Carter, ready to go?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. You weren't here.
Yes. Okay, minutes proved. Invitation for public comment. Don't see anybody, so we'll jump right in with Sarah Volger from Southwest Regional Planning for our work session.
Do you have an old?
Or? Oh.
Agenda is all, is all purpose on the official agenda?
So we're supposed to talk about that first?
Just very quickly.
Okay.
Um.
He emailed that right after I had sent you.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, so all purpose storage expansion first.
Right, so the only update, and I think he emailed everybody on the board, George Clark that is, got back to him, to Mr. James, and basically said, under the current design that they presented for a building permit, he would not approve it without sprinklers. So they're either gonna have to redesign or put sprinklers in, and if they're gonna put sprinklers in, they'll have to come back to us. So we're waiting to hear what they're gonna do, what their next steps are.
For a three hour firewall, is that what I read?
Yeah.
First. Separated.
If it's separated with a three hour firewall, then it don't have to be sprinklers.
Yeah, twenty five hundred square feet, over twenty five hundred square feet needs sprinklers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I guess in the future, just, um, I mean, I think they just had the wrong information, right? But they need to speak with the fire chief before, like, at what point should they be involved?
Right, yes. Yeah.
Avoid this happening again.
Yeah, I think any commercial or a building that's not residential, it should be a mechanism to trigger that to happen.
So.
That question to be asked.
In our site plan review, if we had something in there that said we will consult with the fire chief and the road agent, because at the meetings, if you look at our minutes, they said to us, they talked to Will Wyatt.
Yeah, right.
But Will said he didn't have any plans, it was just a conversation.
Sure.
So he didn't have all the information when he responded. We didn't have all the information. Yeah, so it could have, it should have come up in site plan review.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need to put that somewhere so that we do, you know, add that into part of the.
Yeah, and the good news is we haven't sent our site plan review for legal review yet, so we can revisit that, see where that would be appropriate to add.
Yeah. We can put that on the, on the agenda for next.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm hoping, so on the site plan review, he told me that he would have it done by the fifteenth, so if there's time tonight, maybe we should take a quick peek and see where it should go, otherwise we can ask that question, I think, of legal, to ask them where we should put it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's a big, big thing if that was.
Yeah, and they're trying to avoid that, so we'll see what their response is, but we're, you know, I talked to Bill Zell on the select board and said, I don't think this is a planning board thing, I think that the select board has to reject the building permit before it comes back to us, if, you know, George Clark isn't gonna sign off on it, so.
Yeah, I thought they needed a three hour firewall, so that'd be much easier.
That's what I read.
We can divide this, these areas from mall or area, straight.
They even have water?
They don't.
No.
They have a well.
That's why they don't come back to it.
They need a well, they need a pump, they need plumbing, they need a control system.
Mm-hmm.
Dual controls, because if you're talking water sprinklers, you're gonna make darn sure you have a fire before you start laying that out on people's property.
Good point. Good point.
This I know from at the base, they had a dual, dual sprinkler heads, two different temperatures, but there were, and if a sprinkler had popped, that would bleed the air pressure out of the line, which would trigger the pump to come on, so their line, both lines had a compressor to pump air in them, but the problem was, it was a single compressor. So when the compressor failed, it bled off the air, then it charged both lines and, you know, set off the alarms and everything, so that was it did, nobody, nothing got wet, because it didn't actually blow ahead, but it could have been a disaster at the base. Something within fire service.
All right, well, a little later on, hopefully tonight, we'll have time to talk about amending our site plan review regulations to have language pertaining to that. So the work session with Sarah is next on the agenda.
So, just want to apologize if I mentioned, you know, volume, you know, making facilitator discussion easier tonight, and so with that in mind, did anybody have any points, certifications that were necessary before we dive in? Hearing nothing.
I, I put little stars next to a few things, but I, they weren't necessarily questions.
Right, there were areas for discussion.
Right.
Then like, what's this?
Right.
Well, with that, um, I'm just gonna roll past the first section, you can go through the, um, the things that we'll discuss that, you know, are gonna move to the next step without further revision.
Yep.
So for section B, standard building area, B1A, um, all of this is new language for the PRD, as the B1A introduces multifamily structures into PRDs, and, um, the first one allows, um, five unit structures for workforce housing, which already exists in the zoning ordinance, in the workforce housing ordinance, except it's six over there. The second provision is actually completely brand new for you guys, and that would be allowing three unit structures with small units in a PRD, and so I guess what I'm looking for here is if you want this measure to go forward for public engagement, if you want to change it before public engagement, or if you wanna throw that.
So I think the first one, where it's already in our zoning, that's it, like, we keep that, because it's already there, like, because not if, if we don't present it, that's not gonna change, so I think it's helpful for people to see. That's my thought on the first one. I'm okay with the second one, but I don't know how other people.
Well, just looking at the size of the, so if you had three units, twelve inch square foot, that would be, if it was a two story, that would be six hundred square feet per floor, so that'd be about a twenty by thirty. What do you think of that map? Based on the ones we've seen in Peterborough and Renn and other towns, it seems a little, twenty wide is really common for condos and for apartment, uh, thing, you know, for this type of housing, twenty foot is very standard, but thirty seems a little.
Yeah, but the idea is that they're meant to be small so that they are portable.
I suppose.
So that's, and so that we're not building things that A, people can't afford, or B, that are large.
Well, that's a good point, that's a good point, we're not trying to compete with, uh, by doing workforce housing, the twelve hundred square foot, you're not trying to compete with a a Peterborough four hundred thousand dollar condo.
No, and I don't think.
Is that, is that considered, is that affordable, right? Yeah.
Well, and I just wanna clarify, the twelve hundred square foot unit in this section is not, is not workforce, it is just meant to be a lower cost unit than workforce.
It, it could be workforce.
It could be, but it's not.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
So this says permitted for any development, so just anything at all, anywhere?
I mean, if somebody wanted to make them expensive twelve hundred square foot units, there's nothing that would forbid that, so anywhere within a PRD, anywhere within.
Anywhere, so it could literally be, it would have to be nine acres of land, yeah.
Okay, right, so this is.
Yeah, just, yeah, got it, okay.
What do you mean by, the next line that says the minimum track size is six acres?
The minimum track size for PRD is six acre, but you couldn't do this with six acres, because you wouldn't meet the base density.
That's true.
The base density is three acres per unit, and, um, with the density bonuses, if those provisions are adopted, you still couldn't do more than, you, you couldn't do two, three families on a nine acre, could do, you just can't achieve that, and I can go into all of the words that support that, but they're not here.
That's fine.
Um, so.
So it's one building.
It's one building.
That could potentially look like a single family home on nine acres.
It also could potentially not look like a single family home, because there's no form-based code on this, so there's nothing that says the roof pitch needs to be this, there's nothing that says that there can't be three stoops, and it looks like little brown houses. So I just wanna make sure that that is also abundantly clear, the only thing that is restricted here is the size. And they could even do this as, um, a one story, thirty six hundred square foot triplex. So I just wanna make sure you guys.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture where it's. Okay. I mean, I think, I think that provision is helpful in encouraging more affordable development, keeping it small, I know that's not.
Well, you're right.
Right, and like, if that's what we're trying to do, and this isn't workforce housing, it could be done in any, on any lot, in a PRD, so.
And we're conserving open space.
And we're conserving.
Right.
For the trade-off.
Yeah, right. And it still has to be septic and well.
Reducing sprawls, the proper.
Yep.
And then the, the septic and well, you have the whole carbon footprint
Yeah.
of the, of the land, right, power, everything.
Yep.
Okay, so that one moves forward to public leave minutes?
Yep.
That's one, B3A, this was regarding backlot development of existing, mark the record, as a next town meeting, or not town meeting, but anyway, um, based on the discussion at the last meeting, it sounded like this provision might not make sense to move forward, because it might go against conservation goals having backlots in PRDs, so my question is, what is the consensus today on that, and is it something that makes more sense to throw with the whole community and get some dot voting and some impression to see if it should move forward that way, or save it for later, and, you know, revisit it, if, um, whichever measure is, you know, being voted on right now, that is gonna require backlots in communities, see if that passes.
Did the state bill that was?
I haven't been able to.
I, I know there's a few that are coming up this week. I don't think this was one of them, so I'm not sure what happened, if it was last week, I, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
I, I am not in favor of backlot development, that especially putting a whole PRD in the backlot, so I personally, I'm would not want to move forward with this, I don't think it's, we don't have this today, I'm not sure that that is a path that the town of Temple wants to go down. And I would prefer, because we're going to be putting a lot out there, that this is low hanging fruit, and I, I wouldn't even have spoken with it.
What about with the, with the backlot, though, you've got a fifty foot frontage, and it's gotta be twelve acres, and it's a backlot, so this new PRD, whatever, it's gonna be set way back from the road, so it's not gonna affect anything aesthetically.
Yeah, but you're potentially putting it behind somebody's residence that ever think that that would be developed on, and I, I'm just not in favor. I, I mean, I can think of specific backlots near my house, but I would be upset if the whole nine, how, how many, fifteen units went in back there, like, that would be very upset, so. And, and, like, you look around at other towns, like I came from Hollis, and they've got all kinds of crazy backlot developments, where you just have a little bit of road frontage, but you've got houses behind houses, and we don't have that today here in Temple, and, and that's a big change, looking into something like that.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I'm not, I don't look like backlots, we see a lot of subdivisions, like in New Ipswich, where you've got twelve hundred feet of backlot going like that, some lot, and they're just all meshed in, um, and particularly, I don't see why you need it for a PRD, if you're doing a PRD, you're already trying to get some kind of density bonus, this seems kinda over the top, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing, like, any lot could have one backlot, like Swansea does, where you can, and, you know, double the acreage or something, so if you had three hundred and fifty feet of frontage, both, you can have one backlot if you had, but I don't like the idea of everybody getting their little backlots and just making a mess.
Well, Jim has a, and I agree with everything both of you guys are saying, but, so you have a unique situation, but maybe we're not gonna solve that here
Yeah.
at, at this time, but your, your situation, I'm sympathetic to, because you have a lot of land, uh, and, and you're not proposing to do a PRD or, or a, a lot of houses, at least at the moment, you just wanna build one.
Two houses.
Two houses on sixty something acres, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, and it's too bad there wasn't a way we could figure out.
You could build an ADU, and you bought a lot, knowing that that was, that was in fact the zoning, so.
Yeah, actually, that's true, that, but, you know, I, I knew about the frontage. But I didn't know that I couldn't, you know, there was no way to do anything, but, yeah, I, I just have a, you know, my son and his family, the, the biggest thing, I look at things like, like a PRD site, I'm like, twelve hundred square feet, that won't work for my son, but I'm not looking at a PRD necessarily, right? I'm looking for whatever solution I can come up with that's gonna allow them to build out there, and, uh, that's just what I gotta come up with in the future, and, and I, you know, potentially could have other children that wanna come this way too, but.
That's, so Christine, what's the consensus that we?
I mean, I'm, I agree with them as well, on the backlot, I'm not necessarily in favor of developing backlots, um, I, I generally err on the side of putting it out to the public to see if there are other strong opinions, but I feel like
Yeah.
we know the answer, it's gonna be a no-go, I, it's just.
I, me personally, I think about, and this has nothing to do with my personal situation, I look at, that, that's kind of like an ideal situation to me, if you're gonna have expand housing, um, having the ability to put it somewhere set back, like you said.
Yeah.
You know, where it's out of sight, out of mind, you just gotta, you know, one driveway, and, and, and it's back there, I don't think that's a bad thing, but, uh, I, in fact, I, I kinda feel the opposite, but, um.
I'm with you.
Yeah, I, 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 I.
So it sounds like we're split on it.
My grandson, I took my grandson through, through a house and the whip switch, I think, the other day, and it was in a, it was in, I guess it was, I don't know, I guess I'm still struggling with the term PRD, but it was, you know, a road off, and, and it was clearly a development area where they had a, a loop, you know, and then they had nice big houses, nice lots, and it was spread out, but you, you know, it was just, it was a beautiful neighborhood for a spread out residential, so to speak, um, and I thought that was a pretty unique way of laying it out. Probably doesn't need the conservation side of it.
Right, the affordable side, if they're.
This, this, this development had nothing to do with affordability, because these were big places.
Yeah.
But, but they were. I know a lot of people that would love to have, you know, I was one of those where, you know, wanted to have a house, and I didn't want neighbors.
Yeah.
But I didn't want, I couldn't afford a big expense until I bought this place, but
Yeah.
this was over, this is not what I was actually looking for, you know, but it just fell on my lap, and I took it, I was looking for like ten acres of them.
Well, the question, I guess, is, this, obviously, the backlot conversation for our region isn't gonna go away soon, because it's, there's, in the, the small towns, like Sodderd and Temple, there's a, you know, a lot of created backlots that from years ago, for whatever reason, and, uh, the, when land becomes more and more scarce, people are gonna try to get creative, and they're gonna try to figure out ways to develop that land, uh, so it's gonna get, keep bringing, get, being brought to the table, I'm sure. But it's just a matter of, for this piece of works, do we move forward with Sarah to present this, or do we, we're, you know, do we put it up to the side right now, or do we?
Well, it sounds like this board is split, so I feel like maybe we should put it out there.
Should be presented.
Yeah, present it then, yeah, okay.
Okay, if it is one to be presented, is twelve acres the correct amount for a minimum on that? I just kind of threw that in there without discussing it with you guys.
Okay, I was wondering where that number came from.
Guy, you know. You know.
Yeah. Well.
Per Carter's point, you know, it's one thing having a single family behind you, it's another thing having a whole subdivision behind you, even if it is, you know, a condensed footprint, those aren't the same types of backlots, and.
Still traffic.
It's still traffic, and it's still sound, it's still smells, it's, you know, it's, it's all of those things, and so that's why I say, like, if this is something that you show to the, the community in your feedback.
Or put more acreage.
Yeah.
More acreage equals more conservation.
Yep.
Um, and less, less potential for the, those hazards, noise and stuff, so I like that idea of increasing the acreage to make it more palatable, I think.
What do you think the correct acreage could be? Anybody?
Yeah, I, that's, I don't know, maybe anything over eleven is gonna be probably a current use lot, so there will be a, a penalty, very good penalty when they take it out to develop it, if they're gonna do a PRD, if it's a single family home. Um, I guess that's not the case, but I, I don't know what the magic number is.
Perfect. Current use, let's say it was a twenty acre lot, but your PRD has this tiny little footprint of five units. So we hogged up two acres. Can the rest of that stay, the conservation area, can that stay in current use with a?
Well, that was.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Current use affects the size of the actual acreage called out in the PRD. I would say, I would say it shouldn't be penalized, that it should qualify for current use.
Well, there'd be an HOA.
HOA would be the one that would be, yeah.
Right.
Well, with current use, it's acres minimum contiguous, and so I think just whatever area is cleared from whatever the actual current use and property is, would have to be taken out, so that these would probably be minimal, can, again, you have five acres, I mean, five units could definitely be developed on really less than an acre footprint.
Right, one structure and some parking.
So what is the answer? We're looking forward to move forward here tonight.
So I, I just wanted to ask, in your, in your narrative, you said SWRPC recommends tabling this provision for future consideration, I was just wondering why, what, why you would recommend it.
Because it seems like it's a topic that should maybe begin outside of the PRD discussion. And something that, you know, if the community wants to introduce backlots, it should start with single family, rather than something that's more.
That's a great point.
See, I can see that, backlot for a single family, because you're just, you're trying to get one thing out there, but putting an entire, like, a five unit or a ten unit development
Right.
on this fifty foot strip driveway.
And it's sort of like looking at what the priorities are in terms of, I don't know, this whole project. This isn't something that is important for this project, and if this is gonna, you know, get a lot of negative feedback and get people riled up and against the project, it's better to.
I'm with her on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to decide.
Yeah, it's an important, it's an important topic for us to discuss, I think, moving forward, but I think you might be right about right now,
jumping into it.
Not, not doing it.
So do we wanna vote on it, or do we feel like there's a consensus?
Carter, how do you feel?
I, I mean, I'm not in favor of this, so I would prefer to take it off.
Yeah. So table for now, I'm with them.
Table, yeah, I'll table, that's a table as well.
I think we should, it's not gonna go away, we should.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't wanna discredit, like, discredit what you're saying, because I think that's, like, you know.
I didn't make the distinction between single family versus PRD, my, my counters to the, to the whole thing is that we're limiting to three units, right?
No, no.
No.
Could be fifteen, right? Well, depending on what type of PRD, you could still have a PRD that's all single family units, all three thousand square feet, or however big, and the only thing that limits what you can do with that land is forty percent has to be put into perpetual open space, and forty percent of that, I'm sorry, fifty percent of that land has to be buildable land, but you could still have a whole neighborhood spring up behind you, like what you were talking about from the whip switch, that absolutely could work within these provisions if they had enough
So the.
open space.
The key is that it says three dwelling units per structure, doesn't say on the instructions, right, is that what?
Right, and that is under, um, a different, that's just allowing multifamily to exist within PRDs, but single family still absolutely exists in PRDs as they, as they have, and will continue to.
So we, one of the PRDs we had in our town, was the very first. So we, one of the PRDs we had in our town, well, the very first one was um Stonegate, Randy Martin. And it's all private roads. That's key to the two uh two hundred acres developed and not even a dozen houses.
And large lots.
And large houses, large lots, very private. Um I think the main reason, I I'm pretty sure the main, one of the main reasons he did the PRD was, you'd have to build two miles of town road. Cuz that's expensive, so the PRD enables you to be able to do private roads. Just a big, a big saving, so we've, we've, we've had, so we've had that happen here, we but we just haven't had the. Smaller, more condensed PRD really happen.
So it could be a wide variety of things, it could be a whole neighborhood like that, or it could be a bunch of three or five unit.
It really depends on track, the size of the track you work.
Most developers would have never done what Randy did, Randy did that because it's on the hunting uh preserve. And he was selling the houses to club members and they didn't wanna be right on top of each other, they wanted to, you know, so he. If if he was a a true developer, they would be fifteen, twenty more houses out there. So, you know, he really can't call call him, but you know, what he did was a little unique. Um but there was certainly enough land to have the open space and have a lot more density.
So I'm okay with you.
His name Adam.
How are you today?
All right, so we'll do that.
A, this is the base density calculation. And the way this has been revised. Now it's, it's using the same um, the same metric as is presented in the um. Workforce housing ordinance, which is pretty much the same as what you guys, you know, will use for subdivisions to calculate these density. But the only provision in here that's different from that is still requiring that applicants. Show what's available land is on the property and then it can distinguish what the available land is, the deep slope, water, wetlands. Can't remember if there was a division, you guys all read it, right? So.
Paved areas.
The other place where this differs from what was here before. Is previously the base density calculation in a PRD excluded um new road areas. And this does not do that, and if I just wanna make sure you guys are aware that it doesn't.
That's where I was wondering what you, so you're just taking a hundred acres or ninety acres and saying, you know, three acres, so there's.
Yep, there are a unit potential.
But that isn't, because you still need rubber.
You still need a road, it's true. Do you want to add that back in?
Well, I think if if a yield plan is gonna. Show what you could really do, I mean, if you're eliminating wetlands and steep slopes, you're doing that with a normal subdivision. And with the normal subdivision, you also have to have a road, you have to subtract that and you also have to have enough frontage for each lot. So you if you're not having a road there, you're also not counting frontage because. You're just taking a hundred acre lot, making a grid and saying that's how many lots there are versus, oh, I'm gonna do this road, so I'm gonna calculate frontage for all of these different. Um places and. And I I guess you're getting a a better bonus this way. Because you're allowing more land to count as your yield.
Right, but what you're saying makes absolute sense, so I'm not gonna say what way you guys should go, I'm just looking for direction.
I don't really.
I think that's why we have the roads in there, that's part of the formula.
Yeah, I mean, the roads and the frontage, you kinda, that's what a subdivision is, I mean, if you're gonna calculate what the yield is, that's part of it. And honestly, I, you know, it doesn't really matter to me. Um I'm just pointing out that it's not really a yield plan if you're just counting up the number of acres and dividing it by three.
Anybody else have a feeling on that?
Yeah, I agree. I think include paved areas.
Paved areas or just the roads?
Well, it could be. It could be, you know, dirt.
Yeah, not necessarily paved, but.
Be common roads.
Cuz we don't have a lot of paved roads in town, but. Roads.
Roads, just roads. Not, not specified.
If you if you have to meet all the zoning, then frontage is a part of the zone.
Yeah, right.
Okay, do we have any other changes to that section?
Just talking about A?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's what is in our zoning now, right, except for that one thing.
No, in your zoning right now, all the wetlands, these slopes, all of the unbuiltable land are not included in the yield plan.
Okay.
So it is definitely a change, and so now it will align more with what's required for a regular subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Not trying to pull wool off.
So you're saying, right now, if you had a hundred acres, about fifty acres with wetlands. The wetlands would still be part of the yield.
With this provision, the wetlands would count towards the yield.
Right now, they're not. Right now, you have to take out for wetlands and steeps.
I'm seeing that backwards.
Yeah, I was thinking back.
And well, it's can count part of the.
Something to also consider, because the PRD, forty percent of it has to be in, well, not conservation, but open space. And fifty percent of the open space land has to be buildable. You're not necessarily, if you if you have a hundred acres and fifty are wetlands, it's not gonna mean that fifty acres are going to be developed.
Right.
But it's important you understand what this provision means, because I wanna.
If I understand correctly, it's basically the, you get to count the wetlands. As part of the conservation. Space is a better word for it.
Yeah, you can count half of the wetland areas as open space.
I don't think that's bad.
But in, you know, a normal subdivision, you can have. Everything except for where the house and the septic are gonna go, be wetland, there's nothing that prevents that, so. It's just trying to encourage developers to choose this path rather than that path.
Right, right.
With the hope that, I don't know, maybe somebody will go home.
Yes, I would, I mean, I wouldn't be a fan of looking at, I have all this acreage and then I have this swamp. And and the only open space is the swamp, you know what I mean? So, but it would only be half of it could be used, so you still have to have half of it reserved for. You know, open spaces and.
Okay, so the only change I have on this right now is adding the roads and common driveways and frontage language back in to developing the yields. To make sure that that's.
I think we just more or less said that at our last meeting, so. Didn't we? No, no, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying it's it's worthy of more conversation. To make sure we were understand.
Okay, B or B, density bonuses. So before we kind of go through these individually, I wanna discuss um. The twenty five percent. That you've got in that first, first paragraph. The planning board may grant a density bonus above the base density for developments that incorporate one or more of the following features. The total number of additional units allowed through any combination of these bonuses shall not exceed twenty five percent of base density. Now, I know we have already discussed this several times, but having seen. My really detailed and amazing graphic that I did for you guys, cuz they're really good. I'm just wondering if that changes anybody's comfort level with, you know, twenty five percent already this. Within a PRD, it's just exclusive for workforce housing goods. And so this allows that, that basic density for the small units and up to. Twenty percent for low impact development features and ten percent for shared service features and. I don't know, so I don't wanna be like, I'm opening the bidding up at twenty five percent, but is anybody comfortable with going beyond the twenty five percent? For any of those?
So I I think I emailed you and felt like it was pretty conservative. Um but I don't, I don't have a number that I would suggest.
Well, we could potentially put out multiple options for community input and show. I think what I'll do is I'll actually take these drawings but apply them to the Sarah Drive. Because, yeah, people can drive there and they're familiar with it, they know what it looks like having it as a single family development, and so. I'm just gonna kind of butcher that a little bit because it's more real than you've tried it boys.
I have something to interject, I didn't make copies and I apologize, but it it's really, really cool and I just found it at six thirty. But it was what the board did five years ago. And it was a parcel of land right down the road from here that had frontage on three roads. And it is thirty one acres. And it showed um. A conventional. Whether zoning now would be nine lots, three acre lots with three hundred feet of frontage. And then it showed nine lots with an acre and a half lot for the building. And um. Putting the um, the rest of the land into open space. And then we did the workforce housing, it was eleven units. And we had written down seven units at market rate, four units restricted rent rate, rent. But it shows how much open space is preserved there with a private road coming in. And I I apologize if I made copies of this cuz this is really good stuff and it's exactly what you're talking about, but I can show it to you.
Is it on the website?
Uh no, no, this is, no. And then uh, last but not least was um. PRD with a density bonus, so you could get thirteen lots on the same thirty one acres. And each lot was uh one point one five acres, average size one point three three with a private drive. And still preserving a buffer all the way around for open space. Excuse me, I just pass it around, I can give it to you first if you wanna see it. Take pictures of it, okay, but anyway, I can pass this around.
I can take it home too and scan it after if you want.
After, you think, or you have.
You can, whatever you wanna do, but I think to your point or to you answer your question, I think. Visualizing different percentages would be really helpful. Because I guess that's one additional unit and I don't know, maybe Matt can respond to this, but is that even worth it for a developer? Just to get one additional unit, I mean, I guess it depends on what they're building, but it seems like. Doesn't seem like much of an incentive.
You you would think if you're building a road, you, the bonus would be out in the road, at least. One bonus lot doesn't even cover half the cost of the road, it wants. What's a quarter mile road cost to build in today's market? Two fifty, three hundred.
It's the biggest. It's the biggest detractor for developers is the road, yes.
So I think seeing examples of some higher percentages would be helpful.
What's the highest percentage I should go? Now, that's a rude question.
So forty percent or?
Fifty too much?
I was gonna say fifty, but cuz that probably is too much, so maybe we could meet somewhere in the middle.
But that would give something for people to say no to.
Exactly, exactly, I mean, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I would say like forty or something, also these small units, the ten percent bonus isn't much.
Right.
It's kind of like not even bonus. I would bump that up. Yeah, it's a small unit bonus for every, uh low impact development bonus, rather. I think the small unit bonus, it looks like it's really fifty percent, right, you get two for one. One additional for every two.
Where are you all, you're on the other.
Yeah, not on the memo, on the other one.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, that's a good example there to actually see you, to see one, because like. It is hard to visualize. And different, so I I do think if we're gonna show.
That's, yeah, and look at all that open space. And then there's the thirteen lot.
Yeah.
With open space.
What we wanna put forward is. Yeah.
Whoever came up with that was.
Alan Pickman, former, former chairman of the planning board.
Very interesting to have like a list of developed land in the town of Temple. We were talking about all these things, but how much land we talked about Temple that is actually developed? Well, hopefully, when it's next month, you'll know.
We, true.
Because that that GIS will be done the next month and you can filter out, here's the stuff you can't do.
Graders to twenty five slopes, uh wetlands.
And to turn it on to what's left, the GIS is gonna have wetlands on it. It'll have the, not all of them, it'll have the NWI wetlands, yeah. That's aerial, so you can see even up to part of NWI, you can see.
Okay, so we'll kind of leave that twenty five percent hanging in the air as something that's gonna be completely open to the public in, but. So for each density provision, um, do we wanna go through them one by one or do we wanna just go through based on, well, we'll start with workforce housing? Did any of you want to move on that?
Uh other than the percentage, like.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's gonna be a little bit. The thing that's gonna be tricky is if the total percentage is more than twenty five percent. Is that gonna just allow? Bonus stacking potentially, rather than changing the individual bonus amounts. Or would you rather increase the bonus density for things or for housing or increase it for LID? Or, you know, do you wanna see it increased in different places or is that something that should be revisited? After the community engagement to see where it should land.
Well, I think both, the idea would be to have an incentive. For both workforce, the workforce housing bonus and the low impact development bonus, because both are. Potentially good for our town. And and they're encouraging the type of, that type of development that we're wanting to offer, so. I would think we'd wanna do whatever we can to. Encourage it cuz it's a win-win.
That that's why, yeah, that's why I think the twenty five percent is too small, because. If you combine your loading back and the workforce housing bonus, you might top out real quick, not really get much incentive.
So should we keep the individual bonuses as they are, but just toy with the overall? Bonus increase?
In in other words, were you throwing out that number fifty percent, Christine?
Yeah, or wherever number we land.
It'll be twenty five and fifty.
Yeah. I'm sorry, and then still the add ten, potentially ten percent for the other stuff.
Um, okay, so are you guys talking about increasing just the workforce housing bonus to fifty percent? I was suggesting, like, right now, if you could only maximize workforce housing bonus, for instance. You couldn't do that and get another unit for an LID component in your site design. Because you're already maxed out if you're doing workforce housing. But if you did workforce housing and both LID provisions, you could max out at forty five percent if the town's comfortable with forty five percent. And so that's what my question is, is if you wanna change those individual. percentages in addition to presenting to the community, the overall.
Is there an easy way to give an example of that cuz I I'm I'm good at understanding examples? So start with a hundred, hundred acres, I can, I can.
What is this in each column? This is just the L I D, this is just workforce, this is a combination. One of the numbers at the bottom.
Yeah.
You know, cuz if you could do all, you can get a better bonus.
If we have, I'll do a ninety eight for the parcel. Because that divides by three easily, let's say it's perfect. So our base density is gonna be thirty units. Um, if we maxed it out at fifty percent, then you would have forty five units on ninety eight for the parcel potentially, if I'm doing that right. And within those forty five units, um at least twenty percent of them would have to be workforce housing to receive the twenty five percent uh bonus from the workforce housing. Um, oh my god, I can't see it very easily in my head. It would just be stacking on the bonuses, you know, so some of them would be workforce housing, some of them would be small units. You'd have your shared septic and wells, you would also have your L I D, I don't even know if that equals fifty percent to be completely honest, but that's what it looked like, I mean, you could have quite a lot of units on that parcel. I would say little neighborhood, but that's not a very little neighborhood, like a large neighborhood in the woods.
And that's with how much open space?
That would be like
And forties where we're currently, that's our current, we're forty, right?
You would still have, you'd still have your forty percent, I just can't figure out forty percent of ninety acres is in my head easily. The density bonus, don't change the amount of required open space at all, it just means that if the soil can support it.
Have more houses than you.
Even potentially, yeah.
Okay. So the question is.
We can top that out with a max, right?
Yes.
Just have a maximum density, in other words, but then that gets into potentially penalizing the developer trying to maximize his yield, so to speak, but I think forty five units and ninety acres sounds like a lot for Temple.
Be a way to cap the number of units per phase or year or.
Or structures for you. Could you count the structures? So you have forty five units, but you have nine structures, something like that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's certainly a way to do this, and again, we don't have to go with high fifty. And we're gonna see what the town thinks, but
Yeah.
That's what it could look like, but do you want to introduce a structure cap? If this is gonna.
Personally, just given the town.
Yeah. The space used up in the impermeable area by having a structure cap would be like that one that you had. Where they're all kind of attached and it's like three lots there, but each go five units or something, one structure.
I I like the idea, given the developer, the ability, if you do some low income or low impact development, you do some workforce housing, you mix it up a little bit, you get a little bit of incentive, I like that.
Yeah.
But but not to be able to blow that up into a, you know, a a a very dense, overly templeish.
Forty five individual structures.
Right.
Much.
Right.
Putting a cap on it, either a structure cap or a denser cap or something.
Yeah.
But not capping it to to a point where it completely eliminates the benefit of.
Or what if you, so if your bonus is thirty, so we say ninety acres, so that gives us thirty units, thirty units. So maybe that's the structure, you can't have any more structures than thirty, but you get a unit bonus so that when you do you know, multi, so one structure has two or three units, yeah, duplex or triplex and all, so those extra fifteen you're getting aren't making any more buildings. You're just adding more units to a building, yeah, going vertically or, you know.
Right, and and it still has to meet septic and well.
Yeah.
Ninety acres in Temple on a perfect, like you said, in a perfect situation, you'll get thirty house lots. Those are all three acre lots with three hundred feet of frontage. Um, so saying that, if you had a a ninety acre lot, it's probably not gonna happen, you're never gonna be able to get thirty.
Be a perfect lot.
Yeah, it's not, it's so, um so the structure idea isn't a bad idea. I guess.
Would it be a total cap like nine or would it be?
Based on acreage?
Yeah.
At least, yeah, based on the.
Which direction you guys wanna go? Based on bonus?
Like if you're getting thirty, that's what my thought is, if you're getting thirty from the yield plan, and that's the number of structures you can have. And then if you put two units per structure.
It's based on the yield plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You're still getting forty five dwellings.
Right.
Like you're only having thirty buildings.
Yep.
This would be good.
Really good diagram.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do better, it's.
Well, it's computing stuff and that's why. That's right, we we've been kicking the can on it for years and now we're doing it.
Yeah.
And now we're realizing, wow, this is why we didn't do it. There's a lot of math, yeah, sure is, it was a lot to it.
I'm gonna move on from the density bonuses. Unless you guys wanted to discuss them individually and further.
I think I'm okay with leaving them the way they are. For now.
Yeah, I think we could have an hour long conversation just on bonuses, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's especially down the road, because if it's a community comeback, like they're only hopeful with twenty five percent total.
It'll be important to explain, that's what we have now.
And we have to find a way to explain it to them in the layman's terms.
Yeah.
I feel.
Yeah.
We're spending hours talking about.
I I like but again, you also have to explain it because people just I think we are elected and they put, you know, trust.
Right, right.
Well, that's why when you see what Alan, former playing board member did, it's actually, that is that is, you can understand what he's doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that was good work.
Yeah, he did, he put a lot of time into that, so you'll you'll like it when you see it.
Oh, yeah, so do you wanna take it or I'll scan it and send it?
Okay.
Yep.
Um, it's just hard to reproduce things like that without CAD and I don't have CAD and now. Anyway, enough of that. B six, open space provisions, so this is mostly unchanged, I just kind of restructured it, um, I added to the B six B to the greatest extent possible, open space till the contiguous contiguous areas should prioritize preservation of that feature for the property, including existing wildlife corridors, green buffers, forested areas and other ecologically sensitive resources in order to maintain landscape connectivity and ecological function.
The only thing is, I I think we had included stone walls, historical.
Um, if they were.
In the site plan?
In the site plan, yeah, we did include those in the site plan, we can add that here. Yeah.
So what, preserving all the stone walls?
It to the greatest extent possible.
Possible, yeah.
Isn't that law? Just boundary laws, what's that? Internal stone walls, you can mess with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We thought there was some historical preservation.
Just wanna make sure that that's not already, that wasn't already a provision within that elsewhere?
Uh, I think I've only seen it in the site plan. Or maybe subdivision.
Um, any other additions to that? B nine, I've added a very small provision, um, where there are differences between land residential development requirements and the subdivision regulations, the requirement of the land residential, residential development shall be dead. All health and safety requirements within the subdivision regulations shall apply to land residential developments. And the continues, um, I just added that so that it's not excluded by the previous sentence. And I'm not sure that it would be, but I wanna make sure that it can't be.
Okay, yep.
Um, B ten, access location to higher density PRDs, um throwing that out based on discussion that has already happened, but instead adding language to the procedure sections which requires um, PRD applications to be referred to by a chief road agent and health officer for comment. Planning board should consider any written recommendation received prior to final approval. I don't know if there are any other town officials that you want added to that list? Or if titles need to change or anything like that?
What we have, yeah.
Okay, in the next section, the form-based warranty waiver provisions, so I guess I can start with is anybody in favor of this at all? Because this will be a very long discussion and I know this is not something that we have approached previously.
I would just say I've heard mixed reviews of the the success of form-based codes in other towns, so, um I'm not sure how I feel about it, I, um yeah, that's my sense.
This is a two-part provision, one part is doing soil-based density exclusively for workforce housing development. And then the other part of that, to make that easier to follow, would be the form-based code. But it's a big change because you're not doing either in Temple right now, and it's something that could easily be set aside for a later date if this could potentially prevent other measures from passing. And getting the attention needed, but kind of wanna gauge everybody's comfort level.
I don't think the soils part, there's anything wrong with that, we're kind of doing that anyways cuz you don't want to stay.
I'm with you on the soils.
Yeah, and I I don't see that that's real him, that's gonna boost everything cuz if you look at the soils and the slopes in Temple, you're never, maybe very, very rarely are you ever gonna find a group A slope A. You know, it's always gonna be steep slopes and, you know, either ledge or a high water table. So which is gonna boost your lot size anyways. So the soil thing seems fine, the I wasn't the other stuff, making everything look like all the other buildings, I think that's so aesthetic.
I I don't think it would pass either.
Every, I mean, I like the idea, I think it's a cool idea, but what I think is cool and what you think is all be the same, and so it's really up to, you know, which board am I talking to? Or which board member?
I have a a couple of questions, I guess on the under the building limits, it talks about a maximum of fifteen dwelling units may be permitted with they'd be under this provision, can you walk me through that piece of that, is that I just wanna make sure I understand that correctly, why would that be in there specifically?
Because if that perfect parcel existed, it had a perfect soil and with flat, which doesn't exist, sure, it's just that, but if it did, it would prevent you from, you know, maybe having a hundred unit all of a sudden being developed. And the impact of having a hundred new families in town in the course of a year.
I I think the second kind of challenge I have with this whole section is if we do go with a form-based code, how would it work with the planning? Typically, we don't review buildings.
E V A, right?
PRD, so we're reviewing everything.
Yeah. Right, and I haven't done a PRD here in. But are you, are you actually, like, are we reviewing the cuz typically if we look at a site plan or something, we're not reviewing the building itself, we're reviewing that plan with no detail.
Like Ben's, so Ben's.
Ben's or the storage.
Storage, we looked at the side view. We looked at the footprint.
You did look.
The height.
Storage.
Except the building plan is different than.
Well, the building plan is different, that's why I was like, wait, so that that's how are we gonna add all this in?
Yeah.
A review process.
Enforcement.
And enforcement.
Well, sorry, to sort of respond to that, just based on previous
Yeah.
Things that have come through, if you don't have standards, they're not required to show you a building that looks a certain way.
Sure. No, I, no, I understand that, I I'm not, I mean, I don't mind necessarily having standards. I just wanna make sure that's a process that like the planning board is prepared to take on, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I think like you said, it's the enforcement part, so they show us all these nice buildings and everything's gonna be really cool.
Something different.
That's something different, then you're like, oh, now we do. It's an interesting concept cuz like, like I've seen, like in Bedford, Massachusetts, I used to work there. I saw a house go up, there was like art deco, you know, it was modern. In in Bedford, Mass, right in the middle of the historic, right, yeah, you know, like yeah, you know, that that is strange and out of place. But do, should I be able to regulate when somebody wants to build a whole property to that extent?
Well, we do have a historic district ordinance in in Temple, so this would exclude the historic district. Yeah, they have a small area, yeah.
Yeah, it's your historic, historic, like, just in a.
Yeah.
What you see.
Yeah.
But if, if we, so if we have a multifamily, uh, they would come before us and they would go through site plan review for um, multifamily, and we would uh, wanna know the location on the land for the buildings. And the size of the building, the square footage, we would know that. Um, whether they're gonna build, um a salt box or a contemporary, you know, like you said, our deco. Um, that really, I I mean, do we wanna have control over that?
Yeah, that's right, I don't know.
If in our village, I can see, like you said.
Yeah.
But it, but do we really wanna tell somebody?
No.
That you can't do a flat roof, which is the new thing now, everybody's doing the flat roofs, black with the, you know, just a shed roof, they're not doing pitch roofs, yeah, they look like something like California, they're metal roofs, that's the big thing now. Um, are we gonna tell people that they have to build assault box or colonial cuz you're a temple? You can't build it. Yeah, so I don't, I don't know how much, how much, um
I think the only way it's place that could be helpful is like, you know, there are a lot of people that are really opposed to duplexes because they picture in their mind a box with two entrances and really generic looking, whereas having the control to be able to say make it look like a single family house or, you know, put the put the garage in the back and, you know, that kind of stuff, I could see where it could be helpful for something like that, but I don't know how you meet the middle.
I know.
What what's that? Caleb's new place on grocery.
Yeah.
Temporary. Doesn't really fit in.
Doesn't fit in.
But is can, is it fair to say you can't build that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is what, that part of? I don't even know if people has a story. I don't think that's, no, it's some other weird zone, and as long as you get the, you match the frontage with all the other frontages.
I think that's overreach.
Yeah.
If we start telling people what they could build on their own land. I have a hard time with the, uh, and I understand where it's coming from, but. The garage door on multi-unit buildings, the garage doors can't be visible from the street, they have to be on the side of the back. But yet, you could have ten of us, like your garage, you can see from the road. Everybody have their house, three acres, you won't get to show your garage, but the people living in the four-unit, their garages all have to be hidden out back, like their site classes. I don't, you know, and I get it, because you know, it doesn't look like a nice little house with a two-car garage, like, but, uh, it doesn't seem fair.
Yeah.
To tell people that you have to put your garage out back, everybody else gets theirs out front.
There's a lot of things that I don't like, I don't think I should have a say in what you do with your property, so.
Yeah. So where, where are we going with this?
So it sounds like a yes on the soils piece, but a no on the aesthetics.
Yeah, well, my uncle, my uncle was all about the soils, he, for years, he preached that, that was his, his dream was that. The building, building vision against on soils.
What would that look like in a real example?
Can you describe that to me? Well, if we're going with the building limits and we're keeping that part. Um, no single structure can contain more than five units, each unit shall be a maximum of twelve hundred square feet. No single structure shall have a building footprint exceeding three thousand square feet, I don't know if you want to still keep all of these provisions. While we throw out the form-based code, because part of this is controlling the form. Um, and then maximum fifteen dwelling units can be permitted within the PRD under this provision, so. It could look like, you know, five townhouse style. Units right next to each other, um.
But the, so I'm sorry, on the soil side, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that, so if, if. So we have our regulation over here, which I can't even tell you what it is now, because.
It's gotten very complicated.
It's complicated, right, so say you can have, I don't know, five units on something. And, but the soil, we go then to this exception, and the soil say, oh, can support ten, so then we would allow that, is that the idea?
Yeah, provided that it's workforce housing.
And. Provided that it's workforce.
And it's meeting also the twelve hundred square foot.
And these other things.
Yeah, and these other things, if you guys want to keep these other.
Yeah, so the small units, they're workforce housing, that's the only reason they're allowing that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I don't think you would get more.
I, I'm just trying to, okay.
To be honest, this is like Swansea and it was all flat sand.
Yeah.
You'd be like, oh, here we get my lots this.
Yeah. Okay.
If I put that in mind, does it make sense for you to keep this?
Well, because I feel like this is comp, like.
It's making more.
Because I'm like, I wrote, why do we do this section?
If the soils are already gonna dictate.
Is that really getting?
No way you could put. All the ledge and, my house wouldn't, today, you couldn't build it, no. Yeah, my driveway, yeah, my septic is, yeah, my house is just, it's either ledge, steep or wet, yeah.
The three thousand square foot, not to exceed that, that's for the, for a building.
For the structure, yeah.
The structure. I don't understand how you get by. Four hundred square foot units.
I was, I was gonna say, don't, doesn't that have to be a?
There's three straight lines. The other thing that's, this stuff, we don't have a provision, these aren't condos. We, we, they're not condos. So whoever's gonna be developing this is buying them to set home and rent, they're.
Right.
They're developing land to rent to people.
Right, right.
They could come to you with a condo provision, do you guys prohibit condo in, in Temple?
We don't have any.
We don't, yeah, I don't think we do.
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prohibited, yeah, yeah, that's why, that's why nobody's done it.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, does that get past me?
Yeah.
Glad I brought it up.
Yeah, I'm glad you did too.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big part of it. These would all be rentals.
They have to be, so they're, they're not anywhere if you buy and hold it.
Or it would be, yeah.
And Dykes.
An investment group.
Kill. So you're, you're, we're really restrictive about who the person will talk to.
Apparently.
Right?
It seems that way now, that, yeah, this has been revealed.
Yeah, so that brings up.
That wasn't my intention, but.
That brings up the whole. Questions, is that, does that make it right that we don't allow condominium?
I don't know why we don't. I would think in a PRD, if you're making a five-in this building, that would be perfect condominium. I mean, that's exactly.
It's an HOA, you own your own unit.
Yeah, yeah, with your contacts. We want with contacts.
Yeah, but right now, I, I just don't know where in our zoning it says that you can't.
I know, I was trying to think of that too, but I.
We need to do our homework on that.
We'll have to look, I mean, it's definitely in the ADUs, you can't do condo in ADU. Yeah.
Right.
And I think we put it in for the multifamily as well, if, if it's in.
No condominium, yeah, I remember that line, yeah, so, but it's been so long since we had, we did PRDs. And adopted workforce housing, and we've never had an applicant come in for workforce housing.
Right.
It's probably one of the, one of the reasons why.
You can't do it.
Yeah, because they didn't want to rent. They wanted to do a condominium.
We'll have to check on that condo thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you can do a quick search, Carter.
I could throw.
I didn't bring mine. I mean, the other thing is it's owned by a, like a housing, like a property management.
A developer.
Company who.
Doing just rentals.
Right, right, and it, not necessarily developer, but I, like a property management company.
But then there's no reason for an HOA. If it's, if it's rentals, then the guy owns that.
Right, or the company, yeah.
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 Yeah, and you gave the example of like, you know, the Mandy's voter would do this, and I'm familiar with that and their developments, but also this could be key in housing or Southwest Community. There are other organizations that are developing housing.
Right, and they oversee the workforce housing criteria and they manage all of that and not like the town would.
But I don't think the town. That is attracting that type of a person. We, Temple is attracting people like the ones that are sitting around this table right now.
Well, that's because we have no options.
Yeah, SCS though, sounds like they did that stuff in Ridge. Who, Southwest Community Services, they have that, was it Peyton something or other? I did one in front, though, and, and it's a, it's like two big buildings or something over near the town hall.
Near downtown?
Yeah.
Oh, the, you know, now the railroad, well, no, railroad street.
I have seven children and twenty-one grandchildren. And they're all would fit that bill of needing inexpensive rental properties.
Right.
My kids.
Mine too.
And, and, and that's what I meant earlier when I said, you know, I've got, I've got grandkids, I've got granddaughter right now and her, her boyfriend. That are, um, looking for a place to stay, and they'd love to stay in Temple, close to us, close to family.
I wouldn't, they shouldn't have rentals.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, why not also have condominiums, because I think both would be viable alternatives.
I think we would have to add that language into the PRD, because, so currently, we don't prohibit an ADU from becoming a condo, which makes sense.
We do.
We do.
We do, we do, and then we also do for the multi-unit conversion. So, but we don't allow a multi-unit to be built, so why would we have a condo?
Yeah, if we're not allowing multis to be condo, then we're not gonna be. But we always have for workforce housing, we've always offered, it's al, it's always.
Should be in, contained within, it has to be represented somewhere.
The condominium.
Ordinance.
That will get, will allow.
They will allow it.
For workforce housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only.
Only want condo in for workforce housing?
I think it's only in a PRD.
Yeah, only. In the PRD.
So it could be a PRD or workforce.
Yes.
Well, yes, yeah, or, because workforce housing condominium might be, probably not gonna happen.
Right.
Times for people that can't afford to buy a condo.
Right. Or seniors who want to live in a building, they don't have to maintain the whole. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Pretty, we weren't able to find anything specific about us not allowing condos.
Well, we don't allow condos because we don't allow multifamily. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't have anything in here, so the only places it says we don't allow condo is specifically for the ADU.
Yeah.
Or the multifamily conversion. Took your old house and made it.
Right, went and turned into three condos, we couldn't do it, like, the guys down here at the, the school. If they wanted a condo that out and sell it off, we don't allow that. We do not allow that, that's right.
So coming back to the soil-based density, do we want to throw that out because it's not going to yield?
I feel like if, 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 I think it's not gonna yield things, then we don't need to over.
Keep complicating. Yeah.
Okay, and now moving along to the workforce housing recommendation, these are actually pretty small. Uh, the first thing is the, the conditional use language, um, I couldn't find any evidence that you guys actually have permit procedures.
Right, I, I've actually asked that question in the town office and. And they said we terribly know anything about it.
So either you guys need to develop that or check it.
Yeah.
Or we purpose?
And then number two. Uh, for sections C one and two, introduce an overlay district to allow workforce housing outside of PRDs. We propose a nodal overlay following the one-on-one corridor. You guys should determine where this could fit within the existing development patterns to prevent undue sprawl, I think. If you guys want to introduce an overlay district, it would probably make the most sense to. Put together a map that people can interact with for public engagement and be anywhere that people think. This looks correct. And they can mark off areas in town, and that can kind of open the dialogue. Um, I had put in sort of placeholder language of a thousand feet from the center line of one-on-one within the rural residential district. I don't know if that feels appropriate to you guys, because a thousand feet goes pretty far, and that could be a two thousand foot buffer of one-on-one, so. Um, but wherever that starting place is would be what the visual looks like that's presented if this moves forward.
I feel like people wouldn't like one-on-quarter, I think we've heard at the, uh. At the thing we did there, um.
That they wouldn't like it?
Yeah, because there was talk about, oh, we don't want one-on-one to start looking like Amner Street. And, um, there's gonna be stoplight, 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 or.
But this is residential, though, it's not like.
Well, so if you have a whole bunch of, uh, planned unit developments, and this is the only zone you can do it in. Um, and then there's the issue of getting drunk.
This would not be PRD, this would be. So this wouldn't be introducing any of the open space provisions or anything like that, it's just. A way to allow workforce housing outside of the PRD.
Outside of the PRD.
Because right now, the minimum amount of land you can have to build any workforce housing is six acres. And this would allow you to build workforce housings on three acres, but you really only get one unit.
Yeah, and you're giving me the driveway permanent one-on-one, and it's a state.
Well, that's part of why we proposed one-on-one, because town capacity for regulating driveways. If it were a higher density development, say it wasn't a big piece of land and they wanted to put in thirty houses, then you guys wouldn't have to determine if it was safe. Or correct, the state would be responsible for that process. But it still might not be the right place for it.
I think didn't, well, so, um, there is that lot the town owns next to the elementary school, which is eighteen acres, eight, eighteen and a half. So that, that's one I could see, or I'd like to see mapped out as a potential workforce housing overlay.
So just for that lot?
Um. I don't know what others think, but, yeah. A- around the school, and, um, but there's, there is land behind the school that's privately owned, I think. But I don't think, yeah, the brothers. The whole, the Scladany land.
I heard people talk about that would be a big, on the outside, at least to do something like this and there.
Yeah.
And conserve the rest of it.
The Charette actually brought that up.
Yeah, mixed with mixed results.
Not a great access.
There's not a great access point, that was one of the things, that was the main.
Uh, you. Like coming off of Colburn.
Yeah.
Is like a horrible blind.
Yeah.
Area, and like that would be, I don't know where else you would put a road, and that would probably be where it would have to go around in that area, and it's like.
Unless it came off of forty-five here across from Municipal Building. Well, they own, yeah, the whole property, which would be right behind Bruce, so he may have an opinion on that as well.
I mean, yeah, there it is what it is.
But that's sixty-four acres in there, and the Charette did a, like a cottage-style development with all the other land around it and conservation. Um, so you're parked on the common, right, so if you're going down the hill. It's on the right-hand side after, like after the last house, right, it starts, and then it's all back behind.
Which street is that?
And to general.
General.
Right, it's between us and the.
I can send you the lot numbers.
Really?
It's, yeah.
It's between.
Here in Municipal Building?
On the left, yeah.
On the left side.
On the left side, so.
Would you guys rather see specific parcels targeted for the overlay, or, you know. A radius from.
A radius personally makes more sense than specific parcels. We can't, we can't know who's gonna do what with their land, what the town is even gonna do with the land, so.
One of my challenges, everybody picks a spot, it's gonna pick a spot nowhere near their house.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's why I'm not saying anything, because I don't, I don't want to be hypocrite. But it is right in my backyard, but.
Do we need the overlay district then, because we're allowing it with a PRD, so why? This is an additional thing?
I think.
That everybody's gonna say, not in my backyard, which.
Your, your logic that if we had, if Temple, and I don't know Temple, so, I mean.
Yeah.
We'll only give you a short period of time, but if we have parcels like she mentioned.
Right.
Um, if there's other areas that, that are not developed. That may not have a lot of impact on their neighbors, those would be ideal places to, to overlay now. Before they, before that change, you know what I mean? Um, you know, when I think of workforce housing, I think of putting it closer to in-town, which contradicts the historic district. Because I think of kids walking to the store, you know, you know. Uh, which.
Or next to the school.
Uh, but, but does Temple actually have. Adequate space to, to, to overlay that, or is it just not possible? You know?
Yeah, I can't think maybe an overlay doesn't work and.
In a radius, and I don't think it works with a radius.
You're, you're picking somebody's lands and.
Right, yeah, that's why I think it's less threatening to do town-owned, a town-owned parcel. Than it is to do privately owned.
And I think it's an opportunity. Yeah, opportunity.
But it's also potentially backyard, I mean, that's like, again.
Down by the school.
Better than highway garage, I guess.
Well, you could just do away with the PRD provision and have no overlay and allow. And there.
Right, well, and I think the attraction of, of putting it on the school land is then the town would have control over what gets built there. We would have the ability to say. And, and pick a developer and be able to say, this is what we want, or we don't want that.
Should it just be that property then? With the radius around, like going a little bit beyond that property? With the radius around like going a little bit beyond that property since that seems to be.
The school, the reservoir, and then. Conservation, I don't know, well, it's current use, all the land behind it. I mean, there are people across the street.
Yeah.
I think there's one house, right?
So are are we saying that workforce housing is not allowed just anywhere, just P R D right now?
Or in. And we're talking about adding.
Or potential and overlay.
So what about the potential of?
I mean, that could be a P R D, right?
Can we have the flexibility of saying that workforce housing can apply? Anywhere, but it has to pass the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that way we can. You know, and I'm not saying we can make the decision. I mean, we can take into consideration what we were elected to do. And and say, oh, this this might work, you know, like we're doing right now. That that particular property needs sounds almost perfect. Because it's it's.
Yeah.
The school is good place to be to have workforce housing.
It's a state road.
You know.
I mean, personally, I'm not sure that instills a lot of confidence in just the general public that that language has discretion to put. It anywhere. I I don't know, m- maybe, but I'd rather personally, I'd rather have it written down. Where something can happen than. Leave it at the discretion. Constantly changing board, right?
And I'm not saying that that's the only way to do it. I I'm saying that that.
Yeah.
Maybe living that provision in there so that if somebody approaches us with. Workforce housing to go in this particular property.
Right.
That we could work with the abutters and and say, and and you know, try and. Make it happen.
But they could do a P R D. Anyways, then make it happen, so not sure.
Size them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I can back it up a little. It sounds like you're talking about a conditional use use permit, not a special exception, cuz that would fall under the authority of the B B A.
Also, I'm not clear of what a condition means. What is that definition?
I don't really know. I've never.
I don't understand.
Used one.
You know, it's not recommended as from what I've seen.
Yeah, I mean.
Too subjective.
I think it 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 is just placing all the authority on the planning board and probably. Had a similar process of special exception, but the criteria would be defined. By the planning board rather than, I mean, our statutes.
I feel like they're pretty vague when I looked this up.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of experience with them.
Yeah. Not many towns use them. I I think cuz they're it's open to legal challenge.
Yeah, well, you hear the stories of the other planning boards and surrounding towns that the goalpost in the middle of the game.
Right.
I think that's exactly what conditional use does.
Yeah.
If you keep having.
You're making your own rules.
You've seen it. Some towns are a little tougher than others. They they keep coming in with their plans and well, you haven't satisfied us yet. Come back for three more things next minute.
Yeah.
That's, I think, but conditional you, I think that's just a wrong way to run a. A government or a board.
It's to discourage people from opting for whatever that.
You can't change the, like I said, you came with the goalpost in the middle of the game.
Yeah.
Have to have rules and people meet the rules.
That's how I feel, right? Like it should be written down, so that somebody knows what can be done and not, but.
And they can't make up new rules just because, oh, hey, oh, you're doing that? Well, we don't like that. We're gonna change it, you know, that's. That's uh.
I would say, can we do the overlay on that property next to the school and put it to public comment?
Yeah.
We get the conversation, a good idea.
Maybe ask, does anybody have any other ideas?
Right, right.
Yeah, open ended, I like that, I do too. I don't think it'll get much, but but or you you might get a lot of feedback as I think this will work, but then you'll get the. People impacted by.
No.
Not next to me.
Yep.
Okay, um, the next one, amended density bonus allowance to exclude. Re- uh, reference to a P R D plan. So G one. Let's see, boom, formula, for it said, a planned residential development plan that will guarantee a designated percentage of units. No lower than twenty percent reserved for workforce housing will be granted one additional dwelling, dot dot. I'm just proposing crossing out. A planned residential development. So it would just read a plan that will guarantee a designated percentage of units no over than twenty percent. And so really, this was only gonna matter. If. The overlay district moves forward anywhere.
Cuz this really only applies then to the everything, everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Um, and now we've. Amend units per building from six to five. Um, that was just something that came up in the discussion with P R D. And since P R D is five, this should also be five.
Yeah, just to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's it. So I'm going to. Sort of redraw the language and drawings. For um, overlay district to be the lot that's next to the school. And. Just let me check out my notes. So that's the further out. Um, we're adding stone walls to the open space provision. Um, it will show. Examples of the density bonuses going up to a total of fifty percent bonus for the community to. If you back on.
And in between, you know.
Yeah, and in between. Um, we are throwing out the back lots of visions. Adding the roads back in for extension. Oh, and some driveways and join the frontage for the yield plans. And that's it. Did I miss anything? Okay.
So when do we finish up with that condo? Is this something that we're gonna address?
Oh, yeah, if you wanna add that.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah, just as soon as you get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, good question.
Check on condos, I wrote.
If not, can we add it to?
Yeah. Okay, perfect. I did have it written down, it's in place far next to it, so. Um, was there anything else?
I don't think so, but.
Okay.
I'm sure Kathy has excellent minutes.
She always.
So what's next?
So.
We next. Be you on the seventeenth of July?
Seventeenth or is it the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen, okay. Um, yes, we'll see you on the fifteenth, um. Supposedly, I'm gonna have the poster boards complete, and I think I'll be able to now. This created a lot of direction, so thank you guys for really. Buckling down for us tonight, um.
And it's not even nine o'clock yet.
Worth it to have an eighteen page memo. Uh, okay, so the posters will be complete, we'll have a draft mailer ready and. Some form of presentation material, but that and might. Hold off on a little bit until we see what the initial engagement yields, because that's gonna change a lot of what we do, so I guess. Do you guys want to see the draft presentation materials in July, or is that gonna be really change the field of any of the other nails? Because that's for.
Not, it's for October.
Hey, yeah.
And that's fine.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Um, and then the plan will be first week of August. Um, you guys will set up the boards and deal with moving them first week of September. Um, and so I will. Who should I coordinate with? I can drop materials off. Whenever. Away, that's why I want them to be complete, so I can bring them on the fifteenth.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do you guys want to be able to see them before they're complete, so you can provide feedback and say, I understand this, I don't understand this, cuz that would be. Helpful for me.
Are you able to take pictures of them?
Well, I'll make them as PDFs.
Okay.
And so I can send you guys PDFs.
Yeah, that's a great.
Yeah, okay, so I'll um. Is it best to send everything to Kathy or to Temple Planning Board or?
I mean, you get the Temple Planning Board emails too, so you can send them to the Temple Planning Board and then she can put them in the Dropbox and. We'll all get them at the same time.
Okay.
Touch them on the agenda.
Yeah, that'll be perfect. And Christine, if you send me those materials, um.
Yep.
Then maybe I'll to, I'll work on the Sarah Drive subdivisions and that one as well for.
Yep.
Demonstrating what is going to be.
Okay, I'm missing them now. So um, the only thing I wanna just let you know, I'm away from the. Nineteenth of July to the twenty eighth. So I can get materials from you. Act on like the twenty ninth or thirtieth, just for setup.
Yeah, and if we manage to get this done before the fifteenth and I get feedback from you before the fifteenth, I mean, I feel like this is the big thing to be able to actually accomplish that. With the display boards, so if you do, I'll just bring them with me on the fifteen.
Okay.
Um. But, yeah, we can figure that out.
Uh, yeah, that's great, thanks.
Great, perfect, thank you, you guys.
Thank you, sir. Um, so what's next, the Soul Spark?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get some work on checklist.
I did.
Thinking the exact same thing, but.
Did you do it? I was worried. I was gonna duplicate efforts. I had, I brought a couple extras too.
Yeah, like eight copies.
Actually.
Yeah, that's it.
That's good.
I have, yeah. I've seen worse.
A lot of, a lot of changes.
So, um, so for this checklist, um. I I just, um. Took their recommendations. And add essentially added to what. We already have. So it was really just putting in instructions and guidelines. But there's no regulation change, there's nothing changing from what is, we're not requiring anything additional, we're just. I guess we kind of are requiring additional documents, but it doesn't give criteria for what. Um, people can and can't do, doesn't, it just asks for the information. So this first page would be part of the application, the second page, um, other than like this couple of things I highlighted with questions. And then the form would have to be redone. With the changes that I highlighted on the last page. So I don't know if anybody had read, but it it's essentially what they recommend. Plus what we already have.
So you just melded the two together?
I did, yeah. And this would have to be changed a little bit, like moving the fee, I think, is teeny tiny at the top, be great for that to be. In a different place and maybe we don't wanna, well, I don't know, if we wanna have the dollar amount. In case it changes in the future, but it's probably not that big of a deal. Simple diagram site plan, and that was just to. Be consistent with the language. And un-add electrical diagram, that's something they recommend. I think, um. Yeah, and then I added some, just some checkboxes to. For people to indicate they were submitting that. And then I added the battery storage thing. I think that was something you had recommended. I don't think we. I don't think we have expiration dates for the permits now, so I I left that highlighted cuz I didn't. Didn't know if we wanted that or not. And then this would go to the select board presumably for.
What did you say about the expiration date?
So it's on the second page?
Yes, it's six months.
Yeah, all permits, that's just what they recommend, but we don't currently require that. Um, so that was a question I had. And to have the work complete within eighteen months. Again, that's.
I like having the work completed, but I feel like you can maybe increase the permit to a year. Cuz you know how life goes.
Yeah, sure, and materials, getting materials.
Yeah.
And you know, we could say you can apply for an extension.
Right.
If you need it.
Right, cuz would they have to pay the fee twice if they got it again, or?
If they, not usually. And you know, if they have a good reason for needing an extension, then they'll just.
Kinda keeps it moving.
Yeah.
Encourages movement, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
I make a motion to accept this draft of the permit process for the soul. Uh, full fart.
Oh, second.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Great, um, send it to um, the select board. And save. On the document right now.
Uh, the zoning ordinance update formatting?
Done.
It's all done, right?
Can come off the agenda.
Um, Russ, um, did you talk to?
Nick, I talked to him.
C A I Technologies?
I asked him and he said, we should all get invitations by end of the week. To review the their. Conversion, their software, putting everything together is pretty much done.
Did they update the twenty twenty four changes? Cuz that wasn't on the version we got.
I get it, I asked.
Yeah, cuz you, yeah.
Yeah, cuz the email.
I've found mistakes every year, so just.
Yeah.
Um, so I was just referring to the.
The conversion.
Conversion.
That's done, he says.
Thirty days, we had to get back to them with feedback within thirty days and we're coming up on that, so June. June twenty eighth will be thirty days, so it's.
Yep.
Into next week.
I think they they expect us to start reviewing their online stuff. The end of this week. So they've done some, they've put together the online stuff. And I think that's what we look to see, cuz we'll be able to, you can't tell from the tax map, the paper, like, does this road really follow the?
Right, right, right.
So you gotta see it on the overlay to see if it's just really right or not. Like if all, if we get it in. Main Street's still out there. I think, no, this is not right.
Yeah.
So where where are we gonna access this?
They're gonna send us a the planning board, like an email invite to.
Preview of the system.
Yeah. Right, it's not gonna go live. We all get to look at it and we also get to select. Um, some of the stuff, you know, some stuff like parcels and the road, all that, that comes with it. But there's other things you can say, like, I want the. Wetlands inventory stuff on there, or I want the. Slope, that kinda stuff. Um. And what they do is a lot of it's already on New Hampshire granite. Um, they just. Suck it off their database, yeah.
So that's gonna happen within the next week, you think?
Like Friday, apparently.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I and I think that's all fine, but uh, we need to see the twenty twenty four updates done.
Yeah. I'll I'll talk to them about that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Make sure that that's also incorporated.
Right.
And you approve the the payment for the selection to the.
I'm pretty sure I saw that go through, but I didn't.
I think Carol said that I paid it, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good, well, thank you. Um. We're all set with Martin Von Snyder and they're all registered.
Everything's all recorded, so.
So we can take those off the.
Yep.
Of all cool business, I guess, Kathy.
The survey's done also, the annual survey.
Thank you.
Submitted that.
Doing that.
After the last meeting. That's done.
So that can come off the agenda. And then, uh, I guess just other business.
But, um, yeah, like I said earlier, the site plan review regs, um, I did send it back to Joe Durkland, said we do in fact need you to review these and. Can you do it by July fifteenth and, um, he said he thought he could, so. I said, you know, we'd like to have the hearing in August if possible, unless there's some significant changes. So that we can just focus on the other stuff come September. Um, so he seemed to think he could meet that. Deadline. So that proposed zoning amendments, next one, that that can come on too, that's all done. Yeah.
So we can, uh, we get a chance, we'll eventually work on the board procedures, we keep that on there for, so we remember.
Yep.
And the driveway regs, I guess we're. We still at some point should.
Yep.
Have some finality to that and then. Have some finality to that, and then the premises zoning, we're gonna talk about later. Or we.
Some other year.
Yeah.
Or is that we're not going to bring it up without discussion this year. So I think if we are. In agreement that it's some other year, then, then we're not gonna broach that topic.
Bring it up this fall and and talk, yeah. So we can take it off the agenda then.
Yeah.
I, I think that.
Yeah, I, I, I interpreted it maybe a little different from her. I thought that she was telling us to make a decision.
I think she just, I, I think she, I don't know, I, I'm not gonna speak for her, but my, the way I understood it was that. And, yeah. Well, then if so, have discussion about it ahead of time and not in December.
Yeah, so we're just saying, as a board, we're not gonna stop, bring it up this year. It's not on our radar. Okay, so we can take it off. And then, uh, what do you have for? You've been pretty good about sending out all the.
Yeah.
Stuff to us.
Yeah, I feel like there was another one, but. I don't know. It just maybe didn't make it to the agenda. Might've come later, but.
Good, off, off topic. The, we talked about this in the last meeting, those lots that I thought weren't doubtful, that actually are no switch. Is that a PRD? Are those period? Isn't there three houses on each?
Oh, um, there, those are common driveway down by Mark Salisbury. Those are a no switch, three common driveways, and each driveway has two or three, uh, houses there. So I think this. I don't know anymore about it. No, I mean, I'm gonna.
Different zoning, right?
It's no switch, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
I just wondered, as examples, we see them go up. This is what this looks like, you know, that they used it or not. Look at it, it must be a recorded plan.
Yeah, well, I, I, so I was thinking that, that. You know, that, that land probably, um, and that the, the land that's on the temple side too. Was logged, and I don't know who owns it, but.
Guy from Jackson, the Hampshire.
So that it it is a perfect spot for some sort of housing, right near the school. It was where the. Uh, station.
Pipeline.
Pipeline, the station was gonna go, so.
Twenty-five acres.
Scared a lot of people away, but that, that's a perfect spot right by the school down there to do what we're talking about with.
That's temple.
The temple on, uh, was it? Mountain view. Yeah, it has. They logged it.
Yeah, but it is, it's, it's high and dry.
Surprise, no builders, uh, maybe they have. Yeah.
I've tried to reach him.
You've tried to reach him.
Multiple times.
It's a great spot if you were gonna do some of the stuff we're talking about, right by the school.
Another off topic thing, the, uh, across from the mobile station on one line, that road that goes up. To the back part of Long Moon, I guess. That little place off to the right that has the big sign saying this is, this is what the town did. Does anybody know what that is?
Oh, it's an abandoned house, kind of.
It's, it's a dugout, somebody like dug out like they're gonna put a road in. Off to the right, but they have a, a sign that says, this is what Wimbledon does, or something like that.
There's a graveyard right there, and there's a sand pit right there. Yeah.
And there was an old house there.
Old house.
I, I think lettuce at some point had something to do with that. Well, so they were probably digging through to get, and then the town stopped them. That was years ago. Been sitting there empty. Yeah, but all fifteen years ago, actually. It's a way off topic, then. What about, why didn't you go over to this?
That's a land papering company.
There's gonna be seventy foot roof trusses going up.
Right next to the river.
Yep.
They, they came here and complained about the storage units, and then right beside the river, they're allowing that. I think that's Northern Lakes Landscape.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Do you sell the trusses?
I'm supposed to be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kathy has a question.
Did you all wanna go back to the site plan review about consulting with the fire chief or asking illegal?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, five minutes, and we gotta find that folder.
The other day, my wife came out and found an old cemetery. Up there by the. Where the monks have a cross.
The North Hill Cemetery, yeah.
That's, that's pretty cool.
Big part of temple history, you know.
Well, my mailbox, my mailbox, just right. My mailbox is a bomb for my house. I, I put in a, you know, I, I asked the. Yeah, mail carrier, the postmaster, years ago, when we first bought the place.
Do you, for the fire department?
Backwards, so they, you know, they have a turnaround. So I put in a turnaround. Nice little loop in my driveway, and I asked them last year.
The design review?
We're not gonna take on another mile.
What was, what was the word?
They said, contact them.
It was for the fire.
That what happened to.
Oh, with the sprinkler.
Fell with fire and. We made it, might as well say, fire, road agent, health officer.
Yeah, do we have a permission that says all applicable permits, right? All other, so maybe that we just add it right there, it said, including. Agencies or something.
Submission requirements. Vicinity sketch showing location of site, boundaries, grades, shape, size, height, location, resisting, possessing structures.
While we. So we ask for. Approval of New Hampshire Department of Transportation or Town Highway Department for any required driveway permits or curb cuts or alterations. And that's under general standards and requirements.
Under, under submission requirements, we have proposed development. Proposed streets, driveways, parking spaces, loading areas, sidewalks. Design and location of proposed utilities, included with other water supply, waste disposable, septic tanks, leach fields.
So that's what has to be on the plans.
Yes.
Versus just generally speaking, we. We wanna see.
I mean, probably any site plan. And it's that on the applicant should be going, probably, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it says in there provision for fire safety.
Where do you see that?
In the site plan.
Is that our current?
Those right here.
Well, I'm not figuring it out, but here we go.
Provision for fire safety prevention and control.
So, this is under, still under submission requirements.
Yeah.
Under proposed development?
Yeah.
So it's really gonna have a letter from the fire chief that.
Division for Fire Safety Prevention and Control.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I could be overruled, but I still feel like maybe it should be under general standards and requirements. Where we say it has to. Be approved by the fire. I'm not sure what the exact language is. But whatever the language is that we have in our PRD would be. You know.
I can take a look at the document back at the office, who's had a couple lines.
That'd be great.
And just passing around two other things.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would be to meet, uh, the state of New Hampshire Fire Code. Requirements to be inspected by the. Fire chief.
Yeah.
On a trouble party.
Yes.
Something like that. Shall meet New Hampshire. Fire codes and be, and be approved.
Reviewed.
Reviewed and approved by the fire chief of town.
And that's prior to final approval.
And probably use that language exactly. Then we don't have this happen again.
Right.
See, Ben did do sprinklers, but he had an engineer draw his plans. He did firewalls.
Yeah, you didn't have touch my quiz in there.
No. No. No, I don't, pretty sure he doesn't. Yeah, he has. He has wells, for sure. He needs water, a lot of water there. He does have that, but, but, uh, I know that he has a couple fire, big firewalls, block walls. Um, so, but. That wasn't on our radar. To ask that question, because I'm not used to doing commercial buildings.
Well, and we just took their word for it, when they said Will Wildes told me they didn't need them.
Yeah, and really wasn't our.
We didn't ask any other question.
It's actually, it's on our, our purview. Yes, so we're not used to asking those questions. Is there a way to enforce it?
All right, question to return?
Second.
Hi.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.